Give Kim half a second to set up.
Okay Floyd, I've sent it to Kurt and I'll do a quick check to see if I can find them as assigned from us.
Thank you. So while we're getting started, we have two public hearings before we get to everything else, just so bear with us for a moment. I suppose Katie, when you're ready, you want to read the minimum we need from that notice of public hearing?
Please take notice that a public hearing will be held by the Board of Trustees of the Village of New Falls on February 27th, 2013 at 7:30. The public hearing will be regarding the adoption of local law establishing interim zone.
Thank you. Is there someone here, Floyd, to speak to that? Floyd, is yours? We just did.
Floyd Niffen, Village of New Falls, resident. I just have a few questions. I was wondering what specifically, what pressing issue is driving the need for this moratorium?
The pressing issue is the fact that we're doing a complete overhaul of the zoning in the village. So like most, as you're familiar with, but people at home may not be, is moratoria are often used to put a pause on development while we do major overhauls like master plans or zoning revisions, things like that, to avoid people rushing in to get in under the gun under the old laws, but we consider new ones. Though if you'll notice here, we did exempt certain areas and we do have a, the intent of the provision is to lift the moratorium selectively as we deal with, as we rezone. So I know you have, like your annexation is one of the things where when that, that would not wait for the, for all the work to be done for the moratorium to go through on that parcel, for example, or we're dealing with currently in the midst of B3 rezoning. We have a local law that's in process, so the moratorium will be lifted on that as soon as that zoning law is done. So the pressing need is to make sure we have the safety va- uh, it's not safety valve, but the breathing room to write these new village-wide zoning amendments without having to deal with the development pressures and, but still recognizing that we need to not drag things out for people with projects waiting for the whole project to be, the whole village to be rezoned. Does that answer the question?
Yeah, so I'm curious what's specific, but it sounds like you're doing a lot of different things.
Yeah, we're looking every zone in the village at the moment, yeah. Actually, let me just back up because the reason for that, the reason we're doing the zoning changes is because, you know, while the, you know, our master plan is significantly out of date, they reckon, I think this, the industry standard is every 10 years it should be done. Ours was last, the last master plan in the village was in 1994, so we're almost 20 years out of date. But in 94, the village never re, never used that master plan to rewrite the zoning laws. So we've got a 20-year-old master plan, but zoning laws that are, I don't even know how old, it could have been 40 years, 50 years, are just an accumulation over time. So that's the impetus to look at the zoning overall. The moratorium is just one tool to make sure that's done as smoothly as possible. So I think that might cover the basis on that.
Right, well, I know that the 94 master plan, or the comprehensive plan as it's called, has been used as a guide in previous changes, not as a whole and not adopting everything in the master plan, but it has been used because I know even during my tenure, we always looked at that in making decisions for changes. That leads into my next question is that the timeframe you've set here is six months. I know realistically that really never happens and it sounds like you have a lot on your plate as far as changes. How realistically do you think it's gonna happen in six months? I mean, because six months is great, I mean if you do it in six months.
Right.
They don't usually happen in six, you know, they don't usually get resolved in six months. I know typically it's a year, two years and more. And that's, that's my concern is the dragging out of it.
Of course.
And how seriously do you all think six months is gonna be six months?
Well, we, one of the reasons that we're, I'd like to speak for myself only, is that the six months, because you're right, usually with the resources we have, six months is a little bit
It's like short.
Yeah, exactly. Which is why legally it's there six, and then either there's the, what is it, the extension, you could extend it for another six or three or whatnot. But, you know, last, as you well know, last year we hired a full-time staff planner who is confident that the six-months timeframe is doable. Particularly because we've already started in a lot of this. You know, we've been discussing this since last fall, I think it hit the board table. So Kurt's been working all this time on, on the zoning changes in anticipation of this anyway. So we're already a leg up and he'll actually be here, I think he's on his way. So he could talk more specifically about his idea, you know, what would get done in six months. Because we have, it's not just the planning we're in the village board doing at this time, you know what I mean? And we do have the, the planning board is planning, sorry for the phrase, since they won't be meeting necessarily, they're gonna be also working with Kurt. So we've got that volunteer board gonna be working at their meetings on some of these zoning changes. Kurt's working on the acute ones right now, the B3 and your annexation and, what was the other one? I thought there was a third. I'm blanking.
The ones that are exempt according to this, limited to just the B1, B2, and B3. The B3 is not exempt.
Right, right. That's why we're working on that now.
And you determine those exemptions based on that you're not working on anything in those districts at this time or nothing substantial? Is that why those three have been exempted?
That, I think, again, I wish Kurt were here now, but from what I recall, it was a combination of the fact that that is, one, mostly built out, two, the zoning laws are more effective there, more clearly match the master plan there than on other areas of the village. And three, any changes we need would might, would have been more easy to deal with briefly or, you know, quickly than having to look at, say, the entire northern half of the village, you know? So that's, I think, another reason why Kurt's confident about the timeframe is because we've already, we've got the kind of core businesses not even included in the moratorium. It's really the residential areas around it. So it's a smaller chunk to bite off at one time.
It seems to me the R3 and the R2 are probably the big nut.
Yeah, basically, yeah.
And as they're completed, we are gonna be taking them out.
Right, yeah.
So as zone by zone, then it will come out of the moratorium.
For me specifically, I was planning on doing a lot line revisions on my property so I could subdivide my house off my side and have the other half, which is part of my business with my brother, to do any possible development there in the future. So this puts a hold on that unfortunately for me. So, you know, I'm directly affected that way, so that's.
Well, keep in mind too, because you said the R3 and R2 are the big ones that, you know, those are big swaths of the village too. So once we get like the R3 done, it's a huge chunk of this out of the moratorium. You know, we don't have a lot of really, I mean, you can see the map and you're very familiar with it, but, you know, all the pink would be done all at one time, or, you know, the blue would be done all at one time. So it's really a phased project that Kurt's confident can be done within six months.
Okay, and then I see that no one can even apply for anything in the meantime. I know in other moratoriums.
What section are you referring to specifically?
He said section 1-1.
Section 1-1.
Okay.
Basically, no one can approve anything, is really what it's saying. I know other towns, when they pass moratoriums or changes to their laws, that anyone that's already in the pipeline could continue forward if they're at a certain step. So anyone that's in the pipeline now, they're on hold, is that the situation? I mean, I don't know what the planning board's agendas are like, but.
Fairly, I mean, light to cancel meetings.
Basically, nothing that's been approved is now at a standstill, is the way this law reads. Sometimes it'll say like if you have already filed your application or something like that, but.
If an application is complete and if there's, if there's already approval, you're, you're okay.
No, what I'm saying, if, if you're, if say you've already filed an application and you're in front of the planning board, you pass the moratorium, that person who's in front of the.
It's not affected by this.
The way I read it, it is. Maybe I'm reading it wrong.
I mean, that's what, that's the impression I was under, that's what Kurt told me and that's the way I've read it is that, and I also wish Kurt was here to speak to it since he's the one who wrote it. But from what he said, anybody whose application is already complete and accepted is all, is already, you know, you've, you've applied, I guess it's be grandfathered.
This does not say it's specifically, it says, "No permit or approval shall be granted to any applicant or for any purpose by any board or officer in the village." I mean, it's pretty absolutes. Which I think is pretty extreme, but, and maybe you guys are working on that more. I guess that's it. I mean, my, again, my biggest concern is the six months.
Yeah.
And I ask, maybe you guys can all pledge to the residents of this village that you guys try to hold six months or,
That's fair.
Or pledge that you do less than nine months or something because these things drag on and there's nothing to prevent you from dragging it on, which starts. Because, you know, unless you're affected, you know, the timeframe doesn't mean anything to you. So, but again, I.
What was it, what threshold were you looking at for grandfathering, for lack of a better word?
Well, typically if your application is in the pipeline already, you know, by the time this is approved, then you can continue forward, being that you've already made your application, that you're already. But, you know, that's up to you guys. And again, I, I was planning on doing a lot line revisions. I had an engineer who's already did all the revisions. I was gonna apply to the planning board, but now, you know, given this, I'm here tonight, so. That's all really I have.
Yeah, thanks Floyd. Katie, you said Kurt was coming tonight?
He's definitely coming. I'm actually texting him right this morning to see where he might be.
When I saw him this afternoon, he didn't know whether or not he was requested here.
When we spoke about 2:30, 2:00, I was just, of the topic, of the, of the, but I'm sitting on my desk right this morning.
Um, was it? Well, while we're waiting for Kurt to answer that specific question for Floyd, is there anyone else to speak to this? Comment? Yeah, Aaron?
Just, I know that Kurt's not here, but that clarification would be important, what Floyd raised, because any moratorium I've ever covered, there was something in there that once you had filed an application, the application was deemed complete, you were grandfathered from the moratorium, it's like the sunset clause or whatever. So an answer to that would be, a clarification of that would be appreciated.
Yeah, I agree with Ariana. I had the same impression that that was actually included here.
We had this discussion.
Right.
And it was not included here, but that's why I'm opposed to this.
Well, what would you like to do? We had one comment, we can hold the public hearing open, we can close it. Any advice from the board?
Do you think we'll have the clarification from Kurt?
We will, I'm not sure if I can see.
I just texted him and said, "Where are you and if you're not here, please come here, we need you."
Well, we need to take some action before we can move on to the next public hearing, so.
Why do we keep the public hearing open, hopefully until such time as we hear from the planner?
All right, I'll second that.
And then we act on it.
Is there any discussion? All in favor? Aye, aye. Katie, if you would?
Please take note that a public hearing will be held by the Board of Trustees of the Village of New Falls on February 27th, 2013 at 7:30 p.m. Regarding the adoption of the local law authorizing the village board to override a 2% tax cap.
Is there anyone here to speak to this? No? Well, I will move to adopt the local law then.
No, you can't, you have to close the hearing.
Oh, thank you. I moved to close the public hearing. Second, all in favor? Aye, aye. I moved to adopt the local law.
Don't we have to do that once we open a meeting?
Do we? I suppose we do, don't we?
Probably.
So let's just do that then. All right. Would you all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. There were a few additions. Obviously, the, the local law, we just had the hearing on. We have a policy, a sick time approval policy that was drafted by Sally, myself, Nancy and Joe. And let's see, that's included right there, just all at once.
One sick time, this is vacation.
I'm sorry, so two policies, second vacation time policy for non-union personnel.
Evaluation.
Yeah, the evaluation form. We had, Katie has something about approval for the large format printer for the, through an asset grant. And was there anything else?
Yes, I'd like to suggest a change of order of the day and allow Dr. Benjamin and Kate to present this.
Okay. Yeah, Ari?
I would like to add the, um, village-wide code enforcement initiative.
Anything else?
Well, I have some things for exactly the session.
Yeah, we don't need to deal with that, yeah. All right.
I'm going to approve.
Thank you. I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, so we'll have Dr. Benjamin and Katie right after a public comment if there is any. Is there any other public comment? Aaron?
I have a question.
Yeah.
If you didn't answer it yet. Um, we, I heard that there would be some updates to the village parking plan that you adopted. Has there been any changes to it?
We reviewed it.
We spoke about it last, every last week.
Half of it, and now we're going to convert it into the law. And so then that would be calling for a public hearing on those sections that we have finished. And then the public can comment on them. They're about half of the, and I'll hide what you mean, half of the list of immediate items. Some are going to require or getting a letter of intent to the state where the state highway is involved, so that may take a little longer. So we're gonna do it piecemeal, but as large blocks we can. And some of the things are budgeting items and we budgeted for. So if and when the board approved the budget, then we could see with that including the changing of the meter in the municipal lot, which we are hoping to move to the center so people don't have to get out of their cars, they can just drive in and put their money in. In the ideal world, it would be, at the very least, we're going to get a service contract on that meter which was purchased by a former administration without a service contract. And so at the very least, then maybe we can exchange it in for a leased machine that would take easy pass. Who knows? I can dream. It'll be forthcoming. Probably the first meeting in March will have some success.
But Sally, was the alternate side of the street parking?
That is not in this framework.
Okay.
Okay, because what we're talking, thinking about is maybe we should just think about decal parking. And so we need to have a lot more discussion about alternate street parking and where and all of that. So though, we're going to do the easy ones first. It's the only way to go.
Any other public comment? Don?
Yeah, I've been coming to some of the joint meetings to help with the consolidation process. It's just us here, so I figured I'd speak with my friends and colleagues on the village board. First thing, I want to thank you for all the time you spent, you know, and I've spent some time too. I mean, it's, you know, whatever we feel about the issues ultimately. You all have really sacrificed greatly and we, we all, you know, owe you a debt of gratitude, so thank you for that. As the process has gone on, I've becoming, been becoming more and more troubled or uncomfortable with it. I think there have been some moments where, where things looked like they were gonna get better. And I think some of those moments were when there were a lot of questions asked in this room and there was commitment to have those questions answered. And I know that there's an attempt to and a process underway, but it's been a long time, you know, and I, I think there was a statement about that probably a month ago, that the answers were, were there in someone's house. So we just need to get the answers and I think the fact that it's been so long has been, you know, really disappointing. I think another moment was the consensus between the joint, joint board that there would be an audit. There's been a lot of discussion, a lot of controversy with regard to the $1.6 million number. And I think in response to a lot of that sentiment, there was real consensus, you know, on both boards, that there would be an outside auditor. I know there was a discussion about getting someone from out of the area, someone who had no connections in the, in the area. And at the January 30th joint meeting, in one minute, the deputy mayor confirmed the audit. And the next speaker essentially, by the end of the comments, the audit was out the window. You know, the audit, it, I don't, it just went away. And that was a moment of real consensus and I think it was an opportunity to really get everybody on board with this. That the public was happy about that, there was consensus on both boards, and it went out the window and it, it, it was, it was, you know, it was, it was upsetting. Another point on which there was, there seemed to be consensus several meetings ago, was that we weren't quite ready in the process to hire a bond attorney. And there was discussion about that, wasn't quite the time. And it was really, you know, very frustrating to see that there was a resolution put on the table that was not on the agenda. The public didn't know it was coming. You may not have known it was coming. There was a resolution put on the, on the, on the table in the middle of a meeting and a bond attorney was hired. You know, guys, you know.
Well, it wasn't hard to do, I just have to answer some questions.
The, the company that was, that was recommended by, by people, certain people on the boards to be hired as the bond attorney was hired in whatever capacity. You know, they're, whatever they will do, they are now, you know.
Right, well, I mean, it's much different from the $75,000 going through the process. For a few, a couple hundred dollars to answer 10 questions as to kind of flesh out what the picture of a consolidated government looks like. I'm sorry, yeah. So I mean, I, I'm sorry to lose that, but, yeah, I, I just, it's, to me, it's like two different things.
Well, I, I think the ultimate hiring of, whom I'm referring to is the bond attorney, whose name is Bond.
Because his name is Bond, is that why?
Was in partially a response to, you know, the, the initial impetus was to get an auditor, an outside auditor who had nothing to do with, with this community. And that somehow morphed into working with someone who hasn't been involved in this, this community and, and the finances and, and really can't be an auditor. You can't have someone audit.
Don, I think there's a misunderstanding here. There are two different things that are happening. I was not there, but I understand that Dr. Benjamin and Peter Verweiler made a marvelous presentation to the two joint boards last week.
That was a different meeting.
Part of.
She said last week, whatever, sorry.
Part of what you're speaking of is we need to do two things, two separate things. Part of the Citizen Empowerment Act, okay, requires as a part of the referendum, now, we can do it now, or we can do it, the, the new government can do it, and that is, we must show a cost saving, costs and savings for the last three years and communicate that to the public. That's what we need the accountant to do, okay? To look at the last three years of expenditures for the town and the village and to present that to the village.
Use term accountant. A bond attorney, auditor and accountant. What is the accountant?
Accountant.
That's the third thing?
Just me.
Okay.
Mr. Bond is going to be with us tomorrow night, paid for one night, to clarify for the boards their questions regarding what this proposed government is going to look like, okay, in terms of the referendum, in terms of our vision. Wards, some people believe that wards are a good idea. Some people think that we should have five trustees elected at large, some people want seven trustees, nonpartisan elections. There is some confusion as to whether in, the efficiency committee recommended a town-wide village with a village form of government that automatically, okay, sort of defines things. So we need clarification how specifically those things are defined. So we're doing that tomorrow night, but they're two separate things.
And it doesn't mean necessarily that audit is out the window. Uh, you know, obviously I can't speak for everyone on the board, but we were at the last meeting and kind of the tone of the discussion was maybe we should just put the financial committee report aside and just look at the governance aspects, or like, and look at how this would affect the way we can deliver services and we can deliver a response to public. So, and I mean, even, even at the end Jeff Logan said, oh, maybe we'll do that. So that might be one way of going. Another way of going might be hiring the auditor and redoing the, or evaluating the finance report if.
No, it's not even an evaluation of finance report.
Well, what I was gonna say.
The finance report is based on 2011 actuals and the whole purpose of it was not to do a future budget, but to just answer a question. And that is looking at what we spent separately and apart in the year 2011. If we were together, would it be worth even considering consolidation? We did it independent of the million dollars that we have now been insured that we will receive from the state of New York. Only if we consolidate do we get it. So a snapshot is very different, okay, for lots of reasons, as you well know. I mean, since 2011, state retirement has increased dramatically and it's going up again. So this was a snapshot. It was like looking, going back and looking at baby pictures of our children. Okay, now we're gonna look at, the accountant will look at our actuals for the last three years and tell us, these are the costs, these are the savings.
So who's the accountant? I'm just, who's the, is the accountant? The, the bond attorney is the accountant, who you referred to?
No, no, we haven't hired someone.
Right, so there would be an accountant, auditor.
But there had been discussions of, and consensus on audit of the $1.6 million figure. That was a big topic of discussion. And now that $1.6 million in the finance committee report has pretty much been put to the side because it's been so discredited.
Don, Don, please, may I repeat myself and I'm only going.
Well, if, if the board doesn't refer it to anymore, I, you know.
Don, I don't want to argue, but, aha, I don't want to argue, okay? There are two, four different things, okay? We took a snapshot, okay? You don't like the snapshot, but we do. That's number one. Number two, to move forward, we have asked Mr. Bond to come for one night and one night only wait to help the two boards understand all of the components we need to understand. Three, there was never consensus on, on an accountant examining what the finance committee did. There is an understanding among the boards that we must, as a part of the referendum proposition, look at the last three years of actual expenditures, totally separate and individual things.
But I would like also not to argue as well. I would just like to make a comment, which is what I was trying to do. I appreciate that and I appreciate that those comments may have spurred some response, but I, my larger point was that the consolidation process is, is bleeding credibility. And I, I think there are, there have been opportunities that have been missed and I would just urge you to understand the reality. You know, and, and understand that, that, that this process is, is, this process is, is in danger. That's my personal political analysis. Thank you.
Thanks, Don. Any other public comment? Yeah, Floyd?
There's no public comment. We're talking about consolidation. Has there been any discussion of zoning in relationship to consolidation? Zoning change automatically or is everything stay status quo?
Everything basically stays status quo because, think of the, the boundaries, like even the village inside. You just lift up the village boundaries and erase them and there's no reason for the zoning districts to necessarily change because of consolidation. There may be other reasons to match up the zoning and they would, that, those changes would happen over time, but nothing unique to consolidation would affect zoning. Unless I'm forgetting something heard from our.
No, that's exactly right. There's nothing automatic that would occur, I would regard to zoning.
Except thieves.
So has there been any discussion on how it could affect zoning in a positive way, negative way, sort of?
It was, it was neutral on, consolidation is neutral on zoning is what we tend to have it.
Right now, water is controlled by the village boundary. If you want water, you gotta be in the village. And that controls the way the development takes place in our community. If we become one community, one government, how is, that can be addressed? Cause water is the issue, you know, as far as the control of water is control of development basically, you know.
But those decisions, you could make the exact same decision. Say we wanted to double the size of the water and sewer infrastructure, forget whether it's district or village. You know, run out water to Mohawk and run water to the thruway and sewer everywhere. We could do that whether or not we consolidate, so that's, that's what I mean by non-uniquity, but it's not, it's, it's a policy decision that could happen under either scenario.
I've never heard any discussion about that, so I'm just reading.
Not quite true. If you consolidate, okay, you're talking about benefit assessment districts in a village form of government. If we don't consolidate, the village still controls, the water ends at the boundaries of the village. The water and sewer extended to the town must be formed by special district and you pay a hundred and fifty percent more. So, in consolidation, by expanding out because all of those lines are connected, water and sewer for the town would be at the same rate that water and sewer are for the village users, so it would be a major savings for town residents who are currently on the village water and sewer.
Except that that hundred and fifty percent isn't village law, so we could change that tomorrow and have everyone pay the same. Again, not, not, this is not to put or bad, but it's, it's, we could do that whether it's consolidate, so it's, I mean, we, there's lots of little side roads we can go down.
I just haven't heard anything.
Yeah, nothing, nothing really major, anything that would be is just nibbling around the edges of, of the bigger zoning issue. But Kurt, Floyd had a, a specific question about the moratorium law. Um, I'm sorry, Floyd, could you just restate it for us?
These, section one basically says no permit or approval shall be granted to any applicant for any purpose by any board or office or of the village for cycling, subvention, shopping. It doesn't address if you're already in the pipeline. Now, since I asked that question, I did look back and there is a whereas, that basically says if you're in the process, you're gonna be put on hold. So I guess it is addressed now.
I'm gonna call up the document, just need a moment to.
Says whereas acceptance, processing, review and or approval of any and all applications requiring a decision by the village planning board, any board or county board of trustees hereby suspended on enactment and finally dislocated, except for actions within those three districts. So I guess that basically says that if you're not, if you haven't received final approval.
And section two, I, because I pulled it up also, I, after we, you know, voted to keep it open, section two, clause, number two, um, says if you, I, I don't have it up anymore, um, but if it was, if it was, uh, if it, if you have final site for an approval, uh, that it doesn't apply.
Right, that you need final site approval, not the pipeline, and that's.
Right.
Final.
You're in the process.
You got final.
Floyd's question is if the process.
If an applicant, application has been submitted, even if it hasn't been looked at yet.
And you pay fees and you're the planning board.
Or you can have preliminary, it's not final.
Yeah, so you have, yeah, thanks, appreciate it.
Do you want his or?
Uh, I see a paper, I got that one.
Sometimes paper pays.
That's correct, if, for those projects that have received the final approval, the permit shall be permitted to obtain a building permit and or inspection and sign a certificate of occupancy. But the, that is, that is our cutoff, that's where we draw the line as far as.
So if you're in the, if you, of before the planning board with a project but have not gotten final approval, then you can't.
That's correct, at least the way, at least the way we've drafted it, yep.
And the other concern was how realistic is six months?
Uh, actually, I think we're, I think six months is, is realistic, um, and actually, I don't really know if, um, there's an interest in, in extending it in either case, whether or not there's, um, some work remaining or not.
So getting the bulk of it done may be good enough to lift it regardless?
Yes, and we also talked about lifting it zone by zone.
We, yeah, we talked about that earlier, yeah.
Except realistically to have six months as your deadline, you'd have to start public hearings in three months, basically.
Yeah, to, to re, to, to re-up it, yeah, exactly, yeah.
And it's so close, right, yeah. Or not just to re-up it, but to approve whatever your changes are, you really gotta have them finalized in three, four months to start the process, like, you know.
Yeah, exactly.
It's quick.
He's fast.
Yeah, right.
We'll say.
My recollection is that, uh, we, we didn't really want to, we didn't really want to extend it beyond the six-month period. And of course, um, the county concurred with that, so it is possible that there may be individual tasks still left at that time. I'm not going to provide a one hundred percent assurance, but that the important work, uh, will be done by then.
Great, thanks, great.
I mean, I, I can appreciate the need for this, like, what I've seen happening on the village is, it's ridiculous and things have been happening, our zoning needs a major update.
As the four planning board chair, sure, yeah.
I mean, I just get scared by the timeframe, seen it before, it happens all the time. Be great if we can make it fast and, and do, be effective as well, so.
Yeah. Well, thanks.
That's why you hired Kurt, right?
Exactly.
Um, so, I mean, we had moved to keep the public hearing open until.
Then we closed it.
No, not this one.
No.
Not this one.
No, we moved to keep it open until the questions were answered, do we wanna keep it open and contin- and continue to do so?
Yeah.
Do we wanna keep the public hearing open for another meeting effectively, or do we wanna just close it tonight and vote?
It's up to you.
Well, I'll.
I'll move to close the public hearing.
Definitely, I'll second and see how the votes, uh, any discussion?
Yes, I still believe that based on, and I said this before, and Floyd didn't ask me to say it, but I'm gonna say it anyway because you know I feel this way.
Okay.
I believe before you arrived, we had two concerns before us, the annexation of the property and the breach, both of which I believe we are obligated to honor and by this m- moratorium are not doing so, and I will vote against it.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed.
All right, wonderful. That was just to close the public hearing, that's it, yeah. That's it, yeah. And I'll add this, and if we don't, if we vote.
Oh, I'm not opposed to closing the hearing. I thought we had done that already.
No, that was the motion, that was the motion.
So you wanna change us to an a then?
I'll change your vote to aye for closing the hearing.
I will withdraw my opposition.
Okay, yeah, no, we'll add, add the voting on the laws to the agenda there.
So Sally, I'll put you down as an a then.
Sally wants to keep talking about this till she wins us all over, um.
No, I tried before and I didn't win, so I'm not gonna try.
All right.
There are some battles worth doing.
Uh, Doctor Benjamin and Doctor Tobin, almost Doctor Tobin?
Oh, you can.
Katie Tobin's gonna make a claim to take it, I'm gonna vote.
Um, I'll try to keep it short, hopefully everybody got a chance to look at the materials. Um, what we're here to talk to you tonight about is the, um, Mid-Hudson Regional Sustainability Planning Process that Jerry and I have been involved in from last year. Um, we both served as representatives of SUNY New Paltz on the Steering Consortium. Um, this planning process is part of the fir-, it's actually the first stage of, um, NYSERTA's Cleaner Greener Communities Program. It is, I call it the green arm of the R E D C process, um, the village has gotten money from the R E D C process, which is the Regional Economic Development Councils. Uh, uh, we are, um, divided into the.
Just so, just so you could, that's the, the, the R E D C C F A pro- process, right?
Correct.
The, the consolidated funding application where we get water and sewer money through, is what we've gotten it for like, like recently, yeah.
Correct. Yes, so, um, basically Governor Cuomo, when he came in, he divided the state up into ten different regions. Um, and, and use this process, this regional economic development process for these ten regions. And the village has gotten water and sewer, um, monies through this C F A process. And then a little bit later came this NYSERTA Cleaner Greener Communities Program, which also used the same regions of the state. This is one of the things that Governor Cuomo wants to do, is that we all use the same regions. Um, so, uh, this plan that's been developed over the course of the last year is a sustainability plan and its purpose is to inform county and municipal sustainability, um, land use processes, local government, infrastructure decision-making, um, guide investment from both public and private resources. Um, and two really important metrics that the governor wants to see the dial moved on are a reduction in, um, carbon. Uh, New York State has a goal of eighty percent carbon reduction below nineteen ninety levels by twenty fifty. And at the same time, through his Cleaner Greener Community Program, we want to have green jobs and increase green jobs. So those are the two, um, big overriding overarching goals of this, increased jobs, reduced carbon footprint. Um, and we're doing this on a regional basis so we can all have a common uniting framework. Um, and it is a plan, by endorsing this plan, you're not making a commitment to do any specific thing, you can chart your own course. This plan is just meant to give you the information that you need to also have New Paltz go along this path of increasing jobs and reducing carbon footprint. Um, so, this is a seven-county region, Jerry and I, as I said before, we're on the, um, steering committee. Um, all seven county planning departments were represented as well as, um, let me pull my list. You can help me out, there are clauses.
This is when you applaud, Jerry.
Um, so the counties are. Duchess, Orange, Putnam, Rockland, Sullivan, um, Westchester, Ulster. Um, the leads were the town of Bloomberg in Westchester, uh, the planning commissioner there, and the Orange County Planning Commissioner, Dave Church. Tom Madden is, um, the guy from the town of Bloomberg. Also, um, I think some of you are already familiar with the PACE Land Use Law Center. Um, they had the mayor's round, the redevelopment roundtable. And also on the consortium were the New York Council of Nonprofits, the Northern Westchester Energy Action Consortium, and the Southern Westchester Energy Action Consortium. So in addition to this steering committee, we had three hundred volunteers from throughout the region that were divided into, um, six different topic areas. Agriculture and open space, energy, economic development, transportation, land use and livable communities, materials management, and water. We had quite a bit of representation just from New Paltz on these working groups. Uh, I was on the transportation, land use, livable communities, uh, working group, Dave Gilmore, who lives in the village, Laura Heedy, that works at D E C, that, uh, were with me on that. Jerry was the chair of materials management, um, Brian Obach was on agriculture, he's a co-author of mine from campus. And Scott Cuppitt from D E C as well was a co-chair for water. There were also five cross-cutting themes that we looked at when we looked at these different topic areas. Climate change mitigation, climate change adaptation, environmental justice, and, um, again, economic development across all of those. So, I wanted to reiterate that this is a plan, it offers a wealth of recommendations, models and resources. Um, it does not mandate any specific actions or expenditures. Um, and it's, your endorsement of this plan implies a good faith commitment to implement relevant, relevant aspects of the plan where feasible. Um, we do have many New Paltz projects noted in the plan because NYSERTA wanted model projects that would exemplify what we were trying to do with this plan. So, things like the proposed Millbrook Preserve is in the plan, the Hudson Valley Regional Council Alternative Sewer, Sewer Treatment System Project, the Mohawk Preserve Foothills Connectivity Project, um, multi-use trails projects. I think Kurt, you're the one that put in the inventory and promotion of urban tree cover, or were you the pedestrian bicycle safety improvements in the village? I know that you participated on our engagementhudson.com.
Yes, it was the latter, it was the, um, walkable and, and bikeable improvements, yeah.
So Kurt participated as well. Um, and at SUNY New Paltz, um, items that are in our own campus sustainability plan, green infrastructure projects, hopefully replacing our outdated fossil fuel, um, burner with a biomass boiler and, um, expanding our P V solar systems on campus. So, basically what we want is for you to say this is a great plan, you know, we think that it will provide a nice framework for the region to move forward on reducing our carbon footprint. Um, there will be forthcoming, uh, local government toolbox that PACE Land Use Center is developing, so there will be a lot of help with implementation. Um, I know just myself, speaking from just my experience working on the Global Warming Task Force, on Green Works, um, on getting the town and the village to pass, um, to be complete, um, c- green, what is that called?
Complete streets?
Complete, no, not complete streets, uh, complete, I'm racking my brain, Kitty brought it up in an email today.
Oh.
Um, many individual places have tried to do this on their own. What we're trying to do with this plan is so that we can all do this together as a region, um, and share from each other and learn from each other. It'll also help, it's not just for NYSERTA funding in the future, that if projects, um, fall within, um, if they can make the case that they can move the dial on the plethora of metrics, it's not just jobs and reducing carbon footprint, we have pages of, um, uh, measures with targets that you can use and you can, you can put your project up against and, and basically say, go on any funding application, say, you know, we're in line with this sustainability plan, um, and this is what we're trying to do. So, you can synchronize your projects and your plans, your projects with this plan in order to help position for funding in the future, not just NYSERTA funding. Do you want to add anything to that?
The summary, the fundamentals of the region have disadvantaged because it doesn't have an infrastructure that's regional. It has a lot of elements of the infrastructure, doesn't have an infrastructure that's regional, organizational, or program. There are some organizations that speak for the region or act on a regional basis, for various purposes, but don't in an integrated way, uh, have a, have a structured presence. And, uh, this plan is, in two ways begins to do that, one, it will, and, and this, it will create, we hope, this plan is developed for purposes of NYSERTA, NYSERTA need, wanted and needed this to help make decisions about what A should do with some of its resources. We have a goal that it will serve the localities here and the people here and help them work collaboratively towards regional goals and solving problems. Solving waste, for example, we ship lots of stuff out here, they vary high costs and create lots of environmental challenges as a consequence of moving stuff. There are a lot of elements that are, are, of solid waste, a problem that can be, uh, regionally solved and collaborative and solved at a cost effectively. And some of the, some of the, some of the capacity to do that is already here or, or, or coming, or coming soon. And, and so, uh, uh, the absence of such a, right, quality and, and organizational infrastructure that's vital, we have some structures, but we haven't got the vitality. It's disadvantaged us in competing for federal resources, you know, because we, we compete against other places that have such, that are already together to use a kind of, a more, it's kind of descriptive. The feds don't have to think about creating that with their money, they have to think, they think about exploiting that with their money. So, uh, one, one side benefit of this, other than the plan itself, is it's an extraordinary document and I pay almost no credit for that. We have great, great consultants and they did most of the work. The plan itself is the, is the human interactions that occur and the consequences that they may have to properly build it on. So, uh, communities are looking at this and, and we, we've committed, since we think we've done a good job to get communities to pay attention and engage. And, and I think that, uh, it's a very practical consequence for the places that it is. Uh, we know that the model that we, we see is the Greenway, uh, and the way people inherently signed on, uh, to the Greenway, so we don't think everybody's gonna sign it at once, but we really think it's gonna be quite nice, that's why I urge your, your approval.
Thanks, Jane Katie.
Well, since I like consolidation, I'm gonna move the resolution.
I'll second.
Any discussion?
And I'm gonna also authorize the mayor to sign the letter of intent on the part of the legislature.
Mm-hmm.
I was just gonna ask, um, where, where can we look to see places where regional, regional consolidation has worked? Like, what, what states, what communities, and, and what examples too, I mean.
What, I'm not sure at all what you're asking.
Like, for example, like regional waste management, like, is there the tri-county regional waste something?
In, 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 in the, in the United County area, there is a, uh, a multi, multi-county agency, I think. So there are, there are selected examples on, on a functional basis, uh, but regional can mean sub-regional, it can mean, uh, and we have, uh, in Northern West Jersey, any county, any county, any county, and coalitions and multi-county and village organization, I think seventeen or eighteen jurisdictions, uh, collaborating for the same. So, we, we're thinking about seven counties, but there's some, there, there are collective, collective numbers that, that are not at that scale.
Within that.
So, so, and there are, you know, the, the, the kind of easy answer is we've got a database of dozens of examples in, uh, you know. on specifics in our study, in our center we can provide.
Just to be clear, this is not consolidation. This is something we actually agree on.
Essentially, it's it's kind of silly to say, but nobody's obligating us to do something, not obligating us to do anything except saying we think this is a good idea and we'll do our best to.
But it encourages you to be able to do.
Not quote, not require you, not require you to spend money, not require you to sign up to some particular, um as a general stretch of the word.
Any other questions? All in favor?
Hi.
Thank you.
It's a resolution, we need to do roll call.
Good.
Did you just use the template one that I sent you?
Yeah. We've never done that before.
Just put us all down.
Do all the names, so I was putting all down this.
In a minute, sir. Alright, thank you both for coming out too.
Thank you.
Goodbye, Mauro.
We will be back.
About this?
Yeah, as it moves forward, like I said, toolkits and.
The two of us, you will be back.
It's kind of a given.
We'll be back tomorrow.
Like in an hour or like?
No, 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 you'll be back tomorrow, you won't be back to bed.
There's like a.
But guess what? The answer is no.
Five words.
I wanted, uh Jason and I just agreed to sign that letter on my Chinese delegation.
Yeah, it's already been sent.
Uh and uh I could pick that up, they 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 emailed me today that, you know, the bureaucracy needs the letter else they can't travel.
Oh, thank you for that too.
Yeah, no, that that letter's already gone out. But thanks, sir.
It's been sent out?
And um actually, Katie, that's that was a question.
It's in front of us right now.
It's been submitted yet, it's between May eighth and May ninth.
Oh no, maybe I just I just signed it today, that's what I did.
Yeah, February twenty seventh is the date of the letter.
Yeah, I signed it today, there we go. Oh, you have the original copy. But you have that here?
It was right in front of me, yeah, it must have.
I can bring somebody to pick it up, just as long as.
So I'm sorry, it was signed today, it wasn't sent out, sent out tomorrow.
Do you want me to give, does Dr. Benjamin want to sign that or?
We'll we'll mail it, yeah, that's fine.
We'll mail it. I'll send a copy tomorrow, Dr. Benjamin.
Thanks. Uh but uh Katie, uh Glenn, Stuart had a uh question that was interesting. What was?
I was just saying how the we were selected as one of sixteen communities in the nation for the EPA.
Thirteen.
Is this tie-in together as part of this plan or is this separate or?
Well, a lot of the same people, I mean Jerry is the voice guy, he knows more.
Jerry, Jerry's wasted.
No, it's it's not the same thing.
All I have to do is walk into my living room.
It's material and. A lot of those people did inform this process, I'm trying to remember.
There's definite overlap, but there's it's it's totally, it's definitely separate projects.
Yeah.
Um I mean because the EPA pilot project pilot program for that is ending this year. So they they are looking to submit something from us, um or from us as an example to their higher reps like Camigo's boss at the EPA. But that could be a great example of things that coincide with this, but it's not, you know, it's not the exact same thing.
Terry Lieback is who was trying to, she was a pretty active member of the.
It's exciting, it's still.
Yeah, she's still.
Yeah.
In Orange County, there's a major energy, waste energy facility.
Oh Taylor, uh.
Taylor, that is pending approval. There's a lot of discreet activity going on in uh in the in the Hudson Valley.
Yeah.
There's a lot of ideas about, you know, yard waste and and food waste and so on that are originally managed, so it's not shipped. If it's not shipped, the cost goes down to managing it. And you you run into all the all the issues about NIMBY, you know, um so where to do it. So some of it is is less uh problematic. I mean, doing away with leaves seems to be less provocative than doing away with other kinds of stuff, so. You know, so there are opportunities that you have to define that give you a chance to make progress and build build uh first steps.
Thanks. With that, thank you, Doctor. Um alright, I move we adopt a consent agenda?
Going down here. I haven't signed all of those in place.
I haven't signed them all on. You want to do the end, I don't care.
So then I uh, I mean, I don't think we should do that if they haven't been looked at yet.
Okay, we'll do that later then.
Um you know, I have an announcement.
Oh, right, we skipped that, sorry.
Yeah, um speaking of food waste, um on Tuesday, March nineteenth, from one P M to four P M, there is an Ulster County Commercial and Institutional Food Waste Composting Summit. Um it's up at the D E C right here in New Paltz on Twenty One South Corners. And it's a gathering for decision makers, municipal officials, I can just send this together. Um commercial and institutional food waste generators, haulers, and others interested in advancing food waste composting in Ulster County. This half-day event will provide an overview about best management practices of organics, which in parentheses it says leaves, grass, brush, food scraps, et cetera, for commercial and institutional sectors. Um topics include commercial and institutional organics management basics, regulatory overview, food waste composting, institutional food waste production and recovery, meet the hauler, food waste collection services and cost expectations, and food waste composting in action, um which is an acceptable materials and overview of the Ulster County Resource Recovery Agency's organic recovery facility, which opened up last year. Um this workshop will be a roundtable format with presenters and participants actively engaging in discussion. Each participant will receive a copy of the Best Management Practices for Organics Management for Small Towns and Rural Communities Guide on C D. The event is free, but registration is required by March eleventh, so they can plan accordingly accordingly. To register or for more information slash agenda, contact Athena at Athena at N E R C dot org or Michelle at N L E G N leg at U C R R A dot org. Um so and I'm sure that this is on the D E C website, although I have not um seen it, because I haven't looked at it. But I am planning on going if anybody else would like to join me. Um and yeah, I'll bring back the information if nobody else has.
Thank you. Stuart and Brian both said, I think I hear you have announcements, right?
Uh I I have one, uh just to to report that the uh Village of New Paltz Ethics Board uh met prior to this meeting, our sixth meeting of this year. And uh is now ready to issue a report to the village board about several things with some recommendations. And uh so we'd like to have that on the agenda in March. I I don't know if it matters which meeting, as long as you let me know which one it is, so I can have the materials to you ahead of time.
With the will of the board, I'll put it on for the first meeting in March.
That's fine.
Okay, I have an announcement. I'd like to remind everybody that this Sunday at three o'clock is the Eleventh Annual African American Burial Ground Ceremony. And four o'clock, uh there is a a remembrance program at uh Dale Hall. Um this is a very significant event, and those who have not ever attended, I urge them to do so. And I'm hoping that the mayor is going to speak. Um I'm going to also be there, and we're hoping that the weather will allow us to put some pot of plants from the village around the bench and the sign.
And I wasn't invited to speak, just to attend. Thank goodness it aren't people speaking.
Oh, you're not speaking? Oh, okay.
I talk too, I talk too much anyway.
I think you are.
I should check, I should check with them first.
Anyway, I do, it's a, it is a very, very moving and important event for the history of this village. And I think if if we can, please join us.
Thank you. Brian, you have something, right, Brian?
Yeah, um I just wanted to give you guys a heads up on the progress of the ad hoc tech committee. I convinced um the members, the prospective members, that I was hoping would be a part of it, to be a part of it. And they were all in favor of doing so. Um I also spoke with the town board after our last joint meeting, uh with help of trustee Basco. We convinced them to also be a part of that. Uh and I believe Councilman Logan will be providing us with information and possibly sitting in meetings, I'm not exactly sure. Um I was going to provide everyone with something tonight, but unfortunately I wasn't able to finish the document. I was hoping I could possibly provide it to you all uh either later this evening or tomorrow morning. Just a very brief um recap of what I had stated the committee would do at the last meeting. And I was hoping we could possibly approve it uh tomorrow evening so I could, so we could get to work.
Beautiful.
You'll put footnote and explain it all to me.
Yeah, I'll draw, draw, draw like this.
Small, small, small words for all of us, Brian, please, small words.
For all people but Sally, this is your footnote.
This is a computer.
This is a computer.
The internet's like a series of tubes.
It's tubes, yeah.
I don't have a problem editing it for tomorrow night.
Uh any other announcements?
You have a problem editing it tomorrow night?
Uh-huh. Get it, get it going. Alright, um yeah, uh give me a second, please.
Oh, you're going.
Yeah, but you can look at these, I think. Uh duh 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 duh, where am I, I think. Well, I'll move we adopt the law establishing interim zoning.
I'll second.
Any discussion?
That's the moratorium?
Yep.
I.
This is when you vote no. By the way, I just figured I'd let you know.
Thank you.
Yeah, this is the one you want to vote no on.
This is, I said what I had to say and I feel very strongly. And I would move to amend the law to waste. To exempt out the free and exempt out the in-its property. And to allow, if you are already well before the planning board have paid your fees and are in process, that you be allowed to continue.
Maybe before we move on, just for technical clarification, Kurt, um I guess your thoughts on that, but also do, do we have any more pro?
I I motion, I don't think, but I don't think I'm gonna get a second on it, so I don't need the word.
I know, whatever. Oh, that's right, that's true. Is there a second to this?
There's a motion on the table.
There's, she's moved to amend.
I am holding in.
Commander.
Is that, right, that's, thank you. Uh anyone want to second that amendment? Hearing nothing?
It's only the the two of you can do it, right?
Why?
Because you, one made the motion and the other seconded?
One made the motion, one seconded, and I moved to amend, and I don't have a second.
Right.
I don't think, I'm not hearing one, so yeah, okay.
So that takes care of it.
Um alright then, on the main motion, oh, sorry.
I I I I have a question. It seems to me that the, um you know, I'm in, I'm in favor of doing this, but I I think the tough call here is that what point do you draw the line that you're put on hold? Um perhaps just making an application where you haven't done much, I I don't have a problem with that. But if you, if if it's a situation where people spend a lot of work and they have preliminary approval, which is usually pretty severe work to get there. Uh and then they're done for at least six months, you know, I I, you know, I think that's that's pretty severe. So I I'm, that's that's what troubles me about it. Final approval, and basically if you're saying, well, if you have final approval, it goes through, well, you know, why wouldn't it? I mean, you're done. So that, you know, I don't know if anyone would, you know, consider maybe Kurt has some views on that. If if it would be helpful to make it say preliminary approval rather than final approval, because you can't get, unless things have changed a lot since I was involved with it, can't get the preliminary approval without doing a significant amount of work and having a lot of input from the board, which you've had to deal with, or you wouldn't have gotten the preliminary approval. So I don't know, what uh what are your thoughts on that?
Thank you for asking. Um actually, again, it it may be a matter of policy, but I'm happy to to weigh in that it is typically preliminary approval. That may have more meaning in towns and the subdivision process than it does so much in on our site plan review process. Nonetheless, I would say, um I would, I would probably be more comfortable with a a less strict standard for drawing that line along the lines of um of uh preliminary. It could be also um um completion of the SEPA process, although actually if there was an involved SEPA process, that too would be covered. So I'd say, I'd say preliminary um site plan or or subdivision approval.
Well, for example, are you aware of how many applications we have out there that have preliminary approval now? I mean, are there any?
Um there are not a lot of active applications at this time.
And none, and none in the area affected by the moratorium, right? We had a couple in the process, but they're in the in the downtown, the the commercial district, correct?
Which we accept.
Right, I'm just wondering, that's what I'm, that's my point exactly. Is there anything that would be impacted by the moratorium that's in process now?
Um actually, yes, the, oh, I'm sorry, the uh the gateway is also accepted from it, so therefore, no.
So that it doesn't matter?
So it's a moot point, yeah, okay.
We have nothing at preliminary approval stage that's outside.
That's right, and I was trying to think if there might have even been applications that were in progress, but I haven't seen yet. But I don't think that's the case since since.
Well, that makes it easy then, yeah.
Yeah.
I have a news app, uh public hearing, can I just ask one?
Sure, please.
Would you be willing to allow the planning boards to review but not approve? Like to allow an applicant at their own risk to at least start a process, you know, if there's any risks in that, other than to the applicant. At least they can get in front of the board, hear their responses, you know, start.
Like conceptual meetings on a bigger scale kind of thing?
But just, this does not even allow them to review. I can understand not allowing them to approve, but at least they can have a review process at the applicant's own risk to, you know, if zoning may change and they gotta start over again, but at least planning board can stay active, applicants can still apply, but they can't get approved.
The 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 problem with that though is if you have the, of course, the applicant has to spend a lot of time and money, but also the board has to spend a lot of time. And if there's a radical change in the code during that time and you go back to zero.
Yeah.
You know, then you've spent a lot of the board time too.
Uh well, actually, and yes, actually, I'm concerned also that um that even knowing ahead of time that the board is not capable of issuing an approval is um that that still might uh make the planning board and and staff a little bit uncomfortable if um if there were to be developed other regu- regulations during that time that would change the fate of that of a project. Um typically, they do the most, and this doesn't justify our individual um provisions for this, but it is, it is more typical to suspend review than it is to um suspend the right of approval, because I'm not sure if we could ask, we might want to ask village council if it's necessary then to take other rations with regard to time constraints for acting. After, in other words, after a public hearing, there's um usually sixty-two days if SEPA has been completed, when you have to issue a decision. So there may be, we may have to rewrite a portion of it to make sure that we don't all pray to default approvals that are in state law. And for that, I'd ask for, I'd ask for a little legal guidance.
If we were gonna change it.
If if we were going to change it.
Are you gonna offer an amendment?
Well, I'm I'm not, I'm not as concerned about that as it was if we had something in preliminary approval. Um I I can understand developers wanting to get going on things, but I think there's some danger, even though you say, well, it doesn't mean anything because it may change. You know, I I can foresee that there'd be difficulties with that. So I I think the more important thing is to get it done in six months.
Very true. Hearing no amendments. Any other discussion? All in favor?
I.
Aye.
Approved.
Approved, thank you all. Now I move to adopt the local law authorizing the village board to override the two percent tax gap.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
But but yes.
I think, uh you know, you want to say.
Oh, it's in why we're doing this?
We have no intentions of deliberately inflating the budget. On the other hand, we do have to understand that there has been major increases in Medicare, I mean, in um state retirement and in some of our medical plans.
And insurance.
And insurance, which some are covered within the cap and some are exempt from the cap. So we have to be careful, but as a board, we have promised that we will strive to be reasonable in our expenditures and budget requests.
It's like a safety valve, law.
Yeah, so you do have a second?
Yeah, it was seconded and moved. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
I.
Thank you. Um you want to talk about the policies, the sick policy and vacation policy?
I'm sorry that this came to you so late in the day. Um but we have been working on this for a while, as you know. And we talked ages ago about how we wanted to handle vacation policy for our um covered employees. And this is not, th- these are union exempt employees. Um and so we have before you what we would like to do, which we believe would be a good thing to do. And we have the money to do it this time for sick time. We would like to in introduce the policy that we will pay.
Yeah, Kurt, since this would apply to you, you might be curious.
People for some, you know, if you if you have in your sick bank. five hundred hours accrued, you are now allowed to buy, be paid out at any given time. We would like to introduce the concept that all non-union employees may bank up to eighty hours starting in the new fiscal year. They may roll eighty hours from what they have now. Any remainder time, we are going to buy out in the March thirteenth payroll. And we're going to start fresh, so that you may accrue. You may take some with you and have a bank to be there with. You will then accrue. I gave everybody copies.
I know, Stuart's just trying to find.
Oh, I gave every, um, and you will be able to accrue at ten hours per month for the superintendent of Public Works and nine point three seven five for all other covered employees. If you're sick, you can use it, otherwise you will accrue it. And then at the time that you retire or you leave the village, it will be bought out at that time. That's the new policy that we're recommending. And vacation time, we are recommending that, um, you're allowed to accrue two years. We, we believe that vacation is intended to be used because we believe that people should take vacation. That everybody needs an opportunity to rejuvenate and relax and get out of new faults. And, but, but.
Buy your time.
We also don't want to restrict somebody who's trying to save their vacation time to take their family to Europe or something. So you're gonna be allowed to accrue, um, two years worth, but you have to use it then, otherwise you lose it. Okay?
And just one point to be clear too, is that we're not, this policy wouldn't, um, in terms of the, the sick policy, the sick, well, right now we can do it, it's an annual thing if you want to, yada, yada, yada. This isn't reducing the amount of sick time you have, reducing the amount you get bought out, it just says that it's a lump sum later on, not an annual trickle here and there, which is also, uh, Nancy, the treasurer, says is gonna help us save money on the liability end for our, the way the finances are structured.
Right, because the way we do now, our insurance is, is much more expensive.
So it's, it does save us a little more, it does save us money to do it better this way, yeah.
And this is a, a much more consistent way that, um, an organization like ours should.
Right, and finally, just to, this would, this policy would not apply to the union personnel? Because that would obviously be a, uh, something for contract negotiations?
No. I said no.
Oh, you did, okay, good. I just wanted to make sure of that, yeah.
So.
Do you wanna move it, or?
Well, let's, we just, just, uh.
Please get on the table.
Alright, I'll move, we adopt it.
And I'll second.
There you go, no discussion. So, thanks, Will.
This is different than what we had in the past, because at this particular point in time, we're buying out all but a cer- certain amount of hours for people who wanna leave them on the books. Otherwise, if they would, if we didn't do this, they would just accrue them when they retire.
No, and then they, they can buy out at any time.
Alright, so this is, this is saying we're gonna do it now, because we can, we're budgeting, we must know what this costs.
And we're gonna start fresh. You don't have to roll eighty, that is up to each employee, okay, who has this. So if somebody, if Jason has three hundred accrued and I have two hundred accrued, we both can say, I'd like to roll up to eighty hours forward. I might choose forty, Jason might choose all eighty, okay? Then what we're doing is of his three hundred, he will now be paid in the March thirteenth payroll for two hundred and twenty sick days.
So, so at the end of this process, the only, the most that anyone will have accrued is eighty days, right?
Yes.
And then. Yeah, we're gonna reset the clock for the new fiscal year.
Right. Uh, well, that makes sense, but the, uh, we must know the cost of this in a range, because you don't know how many days you're gonna take, if they don't take any, or they take up to eighty, we know, we can figure what that range is, is this. So we have enough funds on hand too, so is, this is a big number, I imagine.
Be assured, we have been through that. This is coming from the finance committee and the personnel committee.
So we know the funds are there, so we might as well do it now, yeah.
And as.
And a more predictable budgeting for us in coming years too.
And as Jason said, a very important factor is reducing the liability exposure, which we.
For the future, yes.
Need to do.
So after this, annually, you'll not be able to carry your sick time over to the next year?
You carry it until you retire. So if you don't use any and you work for me, and it turns out that you have ten days a year, 'cause I, I do it in my head in days, not hours.
Oh, sure.
You have ten days a year, and you work eight more years.
Right. Right.
And don't use any of it, you get paid eighty when.
Right. Now can I, like, let's say, six years in, say, oh, I will, I wanna use sixty days and take off two months, 'cause I'm feeling well?
No.
You can get the money though.
You will use the, the, the amount for the year.
Within the year.
Otherwise, it's in the retirement.
Yeah, yeah.
Right, or if you leave.
Or if you, right.
Or to your estate if you pass away while you're employed, like that kind of thing.
Oh, yeah, that was an important concept, that if, if, if you unfortunately leave this earth, your estate, that's what you.
Sure.
Any other questions or discussion?
What, why is there a difference between, um, ten hours per month and nine point three seven five hours per month?
It is just the way that that was set up originally.
That's how you.
That with those employees, I think it does have to do with the fact that he is generally departmented and more, more susceptible to illness.
An injury, yeah.
Well, injury, I guess that makes sense, 'cause, 'cause, you know, I mean, many other people in department have too, yeah.
You can't take that away. No, 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 you don't, you can't.
Some just have a foot in a jackhammer or something, you got a jack in your foot and you're asking.
This is for, this is for the ones who's outside, and we don't.
Yeah. Yeah, we didn't touch that, we didn't.
We, well, we, we thought about it, but we're not going to touch it.
Uh-huh. Yeah. Any other questions or discussion? Um. I'll give it a minute, 'cause this, this is dry and tough, so.
Yeah, it's, yeah, I mean, it, it seems all pretty straightforward.
Do you wanna come back to this, a little percolate from it or what?
No, it's been approved by the attorney, and it's been approved by the governor.
Mm-hmm.
Makes sense to me.
Is this rethought, Jim? Yeah. Yeah, okay, good.
I mean, and there n- needs to be nothing in here about, like, uh, giving notice for vacations and taking time off, that's already somewhere else in policy.
That's all, yes, that, that part is already, you just, you just have the mayor's approval for.
Right. Okay.
Yeah, and that's, well, the vacation part is, we'll vote on that separately.
Yeah.
It's just, it's on, it's, I know the heading is confusing, so two, two policies.
But we're asking you for action on both of these policies.
Yeah, the vacation is basically you have to take a vacation, that's it.
Yeah.
Um, so, um, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Alright.
And I'd also like to move the evaluation form that we all discussed.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, since I don't have the actual form laid out, the content we agreed on, how's that, phrase it that way?
The final form.
The agreed upon content for the evaluation form?
And the format.
Right. Well, the format isn't laid out yet.
I thought we were supposed to, we were.
Yeah, but.
We were supposed to have it.
Yeah, it's just not done yet.
Yeah.
The budget's taken a more time.
The point to move is so that the evaluations can be.
Okay.
Okay.
Is there a second to that?
Second.
Any discussion?
I'd really like to see it.
I was hoping to have it for you, I just, but only so many hours in the day.
You want.
Yeah, before I vote on it.
But we don't, we're getting close to.
I.
No, but.
It's up to you.
I mean, oh, we, uh, it was the plan to do the evaluations, I guess, before.
But before our next day.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, we've got, well, the, the tentative budget has to be to you guys by the March twentieth, so we're not, we're not like rushed for time with the budget yet.
Right.
That's right.
Um, so we've got some breathing room still, it's not, you left hours, so it's up to you guys.
I mean, I, I truly like to just review it one more time. I know it's not like a huge deal, but.
Okay, let's.
So can we table this then to the next meeting?
Yep, and it's gotta be.
Yeah, unless, yeah, I mean, unless it's like super close.
'Cause that'll be plenty of time to get this done.
Okay, the next agenda has to be on the table.
Motion to postpone.
Yes, I'm making it over right now, so you can all have.
Unless you all would agree to just review it by email.
Yeah, it doesn't require board action, um, legally or anything.
See, I want it to have board action, 'cause I think it's important.
I wanna type board action as well, but I would really like to see it first.
Alright, well, let's just table it, and you'll see, put, get the paper in front of everybody, yeah.
Okay, well, first thing, March agenda, let's see.
Alright. Uh, next, the, uh, I think you all were emailed a while ago on this NACERTA program we've been exploring, or Katie's been exploring. Seventy-five percent buy-in, blah, 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 blah. The one thing that we can't do in-house is, uh, the, a large format printer. Large format printer for, uh, the planning office, because it's over our procurement policy. So this would be seventy-five percent of this cost recovered by NACERTA, and we can't, we do have the money in the budget this year to do this. So this would just, this, uh.
I'll make a motion to protect.
Thank you, I'm, I'm rambling. I'll second. Any discussion?
So, then.
Is, are we sure that it is seventy-five percent reimbursable?
Yes, I, I was very.
I mean, we are not on that list, whoever gets in first.
Katie's been working the phones.
I, I ca- I called with this model number to make sure that this, that if I bought this item this week, that, that it would be covered and be seventy-five percent, and that there was still money in the budget, and when I, and I was told week ending last week, there was a still money in the budget, and that this particular model would be paid for, as long as it came in under five thousand dollars. And we met, and Kurt gave me a, was specific.
And this is what you want?
Uh, well, actually, what it was, is it's a substitute for the original request, but we didn't know which would necessarily, specific make and model would be eligible. Katie came to me and presented that to me with all the details, and I said, I believe it, it performs, it'll perform as the others.
Okay, Katie, I have a suggestion.
Yes, ma'am.
I think that we ought to put, that this is available on the website at so much a copy, and make some money to pay the difference.
P D T will be mad at you.
No, I'm serious.
I like, I, I will happily.
Because a lot of people sometimes need a large copy of something, even, even our applicants.
A large format.
And if we could provide the service for whatever we consider a reasonable cost for a copy.
Is that for, for village, village project, you mean, or?
Let's do it. No. I'm talking about somebody who, who's going to come before the planning board and they need an extra copy because they came in.
Well, well, that's, that's, that's village business, I'm not saying if I wanna go and do it, something has nothing to do with anything with the village, I can't come here.
That's a village fund.
Right. If I wanna print posters to put up in my room.
I don't care, I don't care if someone.
Well, I don't, I don't know if we should be competing with someone else.
I, I think that's a good use of our. Well, well, for, I mean, there's the idea that we shouldn't be competing, but I don't know if that's a big use of our employees' time. If I come in because I wanna put up posters in my room and would like large scale.
If you pay enough for the copy, dear, it's worth the employee's time.
Well, we can figure that out later after we get to.
Well, this is a separate conversation, we should have quotes.
'Cause I had a picture of, I had pictures of Stuart printing that Zeppelin poster.
The, the only thing that I.
I already have a full coin.
Um, the only thing that I, I, I mean, in terms of it being assured, can we get in writing from them that the seventy-five percent will be?
Why don't we approve a conditional? That way we don't need to wait.
Right, that's, I, I, yeah.
I agree, I agree.
I, I, I have a couple of questions.
I just think we should have it in writing. I, I trust that they said this to you, it's a matter of them being committed to it.
I, I certainly, I. I absolutely can ask for them, I, for, ask for it, but they'll tell you that it's, they, 'cause that's the conversation I had. They said, I, if I had bought it that day, they could absolutely assert it. I can cert- I'm certainly not feeling very strongly about village funds, the day that I call, before I make the purchase, I will call and say, I am about to make this purchase.
All we have to do is put conditional upon your success at getting it, at seventy-five percent.
If I submit my receipt today. Okay. I would, but I wouldn't know that until after the purchase is made. I, I will know that the funds are available the day that I make the call, but then I have to submit the, the receipt for it, and I wouldn't know until I submitted the receipt that they approved it.
So in other words, we're locking into something we don't know whether we're gonna pay for or not fully.
I will know that, I, I, it, it's, it's like when, when any one of us as individuals buys one of those equipment grant, buys one of those refrigerator grants, and you know that the day that you make the purchase, that they still have money left, 'cause you called to find out that it was there, and then you submit your receipt, and you hope like heck that
Right.
somebody else didn't come in before you.
Right, we, we talked about this.
I have a better idea, why don't you use your new credit card?
I, I can absolutely do that, I just need to, there's a chance that.
But you have a limit on that, so I will.
It's the limit, so.
The limit is five thousand.
Plenty.
The limit is five thousand.
And you should be at three something?
It's three s- I can't.
Three nine four nine.
Okay, I'd use the credit card, and that way you'd be insured of not having to wait for the bill you're paid for. It's in, and we should know that you've got it for that money, okay?
I, I have another question. Um, is this something for which we need a maintenance contract?
Yes. Yes. Hmm?
Is this for something for which we need a maintenance con- like, if you have a copy machine, you have, yeah, you have, service contract, that you have to have it, and, and if so, what is it cost?
Question, oh, a service?
And have they said that they've agreed to services for ten years or something like that?
Well, it should be under warranty for at least one year, and then we could.
Yeah, well, that, uh, you, you wouldn't wanna be buying it if you only got one year.
That's only one year.
No, no, and then we could budget in the new budget for the service contract.
There were indeed, when, um, um, the mayor and I started talking about what we had presently in terms of, um, technology like this, um, we, we, I did receive some letters of interest, excuse me, some, some letters of interest from, uh, with exact, with models from.
Bless you.
Salute. I bless you.
Thanks. Um, from, um, uh, companies in the area, and I know that they were willing to either allow us to purchase or lease it, and that I'm sure that they had service contracts associated with them. Um, at this point, we were, we were trying to, to hustle, so what we have is a make and model that we know is, is eligible for the grant. But I don't believe we, I mean, we could call before we order it and, and see about, and see about that.
Just, just, uh, you won't be surprised that, that the service contract is fifteen hundred dollars a year or something, and they're only gonna service it for two years or something.
Right, I, I'd place something in the budget for, um, for rollers of paper for it, but not, not for, not for maintenance. So we could, and if you'd like, we could do a little more research to, um.
Well, I mean, I, I, I would not vote for it, but I think we'd rather, better look into that to make sure that we're covered.
We can always hold off on pulling the trigger if it turns out it's gonna be expensive, you know, more expensive than we plan on.
My view is.
We also.
This is like a, a copying machine, you should have a service contract on it. So find out when you place the order before you give them your credit card number.
Alright.
We, we'll take care of that tomorrow, so we can, so it would be second.
What would be a reasonable amount of, of a service contract, not to exceed two hundred, three hundred dollars?
I have no, I have no idea.
And even then, hopefully that would be after an initial period of approximately a year or so, so at least.
A year, right.
Yeah.
So we would need to just put it in the budget. If you'll just get the figure for us, so we can budget.
Yeah.
Okay.
Um, alright, um, as, do we have a motion and a second on that?
Um, the motion is to approve the purchase, um, and.
And we have a second?
Um, yes, you, uh, Ariana moved it, you're the second, um, and there's a conditional that it's, we, that we're reasonably certain of the NACERTA approval before making the purchase.
Okay. Right.
Right. And, and the motion has the exact cost, right?
And the jury, you, does she need that?
The mo- it does not, but I will make sure that.
Or else not to exceed something, you know, some kind of a wild number anyway.
She was just gonna say.
Not.
Alright, um, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And, uh, Ari, you wanna do, explain the, uh, oh, good, so I'm glad you stayed to the end for this, Kurt, the, um, thing.
Yes, uh, Village had code compliance initiative. Um, there have been many complaints, uh, throughout the village, and this actually was something that came up in our B three meetings, where we were talking with various members at, of, either the downtown business association, the chamber of commerce, um, and people from the historic preservation, um, commission, and others that wanted to weigh in on the B three rezoning. Um, the idea that we have a very clear lack of enforcement, um, in terms of our code. And there are, I mean, this is something that we even talked about last week in terms of snow removal, and, um, and there are things that I think if we could do, and Kurt and I discussed this, um, do, and, and actually, in terms of how it could go, go on, um, Kurt provided me with information about how these things are done. First, there's a phase, phase of initiative, where there's a public awareness phase, where we talk about specific requirements, and we go through the code and know, and we can do this piecemeal, um, where, I mean, I had somebody come to me today and say, hey, Ariana, what's, we got a letter about this couch on our porch, and, you know, it's been there for years, and is this a new law? And I said, actually, that's been on the books for a really long time, um, way before me, 'cause I wouldn't have put that into effect, I don't care about that kind of thing, um. But in terms of people not being aware of this being an issue, we should allow them time to comply without it being something that they're necessarily cited for. So ways that we can do that, um, is maybe how we do the tree removal, um, ordinance, and we make sure that there's a little thing in the water bill that, um, and we go through phases, where we say, okay, now, this week we're doing these three, next week we're doing these three, next week, and we, or maybe we could do it monthly, since it's the water bill thing, or every other month, rather, uh, since it's a water bill.
Well, they're quarterly, water bills are quarterly.
Quarterly. Quarterly.
Would you have enough time?
Are they quarterly? Is that how infrequently I get them?
Would you have enough time to get one of them?
Seems like every now, yeah.
Seems like I get it every other month, but.
Would we have enough time to get one more on some topic that you were concerned about into this water bill along with the shade rate?
Uh, well, actually, when, when have they mailed out the water bills?
I think we're past that.
I, I do, I think they're going out first thing tomorrow, and I think they've already done this stuff first.
How long?
Okay, you'll have fun.
Okay, so then, so then this round, it will not be in it, but, um.
Tax bills.
Well, but I was gonna say, maybe there are other opportunities. Well, but I was gonna say, maybe there are other opportunities where we can send these kinds of things, or maybe we can look into doing it as a separate initiative where we actually send out um a separate notice. And um and this could be something that, because not all of the codes that aren't being enforced apply to absolutely everybody, um. You know, and some things that are more business related, for instance, could go to just the businesses where it's not something that we have to put in the water bill that goes to everybody, um. But then we can have a period of time where they come into compliance and then we have an initiative of inspection and enforcement um, where we don't have to do this, you know, across the bar all at once and try to it take every single code that we see and do it sporadically, we say, okay, the, you know, if we're sending out something about couches on porches, that can be something where it's not just, oh, I noticed that couch on that porch and then somebody can say, oh, but you're so, you're doing this selectively. Um, and you know, why didn't I know about this before I'm being cited for it? And so and then it would prevent the idea that there's selective enforcement and it would prevent the idea that it's done based on complaints. Um, where, you know, a neighbor might dislike another neighbor and start complaining about every little thing that they see that this neighbor isn't doing in the code and then this person is being hit with a number of different citations, um, and and in terms of the board giving their lending their support, it takes the onus off of the building department for people coming to them and saying, why are you doing this to me? They could say, oh, well, the board is initiating this and we, it's, you know, don't don't come to me and yell at me about it. It's something that the board is doing and so that, you know, they can come to their elected officials and yell at us about it. Uh, because that's part of, I think, what we're here to do, is take flat like that.
So is your motion to?
My, I I really just wanted to have a discussion about whether or not we think this idea has merit, um, and I didn't necessarily want to make a motion unless there is general conceptual support for some of this.
Well, I think, I mean, I'm just gonna go on the basis of the shade tree commission because we do have an experience factor here and I think notification of our rules and what the expectation is is fair and and the shade tree commission decide to do it once a year because enough people move in and move out of the community, may not be aware.
Right.
And since we did this, we have had no everybody, we've had a m- major increase in number of people asking permission to do it.
Applying.
And we have had no situation in the last year where people have done something illegally and and had to go after them.
That's wonderful.
So if, I think you're on to the right idea that, you know, people need to know that they need to shovel their walks and that they, you know, by twenty-four hours or they're gonna get a fine or somebody's gonna come and shovel them. And I think people need to know that it's, you know, homeowners, that it's their responsibility to maintain um sidewalks and one of the biggest offenders, interestingly, I noticed in two houses where there are two new families, they don't know the rule about the garbage cans not being left on the curb.
Mm-hmm.
Now, is it really fair if you're new to penalize them and fine them, so if everybody could be brought on the same page?
Right. I think we can't expect people to read the code, although it'd be great if they did.
Then I don't care if we find them as long as they know what the rules are before we do find them. I I think it would be wonderful if we could maybe just give the building department the ability not to have to come to us for approval of the forms like I did for shade tree, but that periodically and consistently notices given on a variety of topics annually.
Right, uh, maybe we can, so, but Brian, has it?
No, I was just gonna say, I, you know, I'm no man of the law here, so maybe Stuart can speak to this a little bit better than I can, but.
It sounds like like a, you're into an adult title.
You're abandoned.
I'm no man of the law here.
No man of the law, but uh it's not, it's my understanding that not knowing the rules does not exempt you from the rules.
Oh, absolutely.
You know, like it's, you know. Who would never be able to get a conviction on. I didn't know, I couldn't hit that time for baseball back.
Nobody, nobody told me.
That might be a little bit of intuitive, um, you know, but there's not, not really.
It depends on the country.
That's right, and it's not always intuitive with our code and of course, every community has, every time you cross municipal boundaries, they have, they have their own.
They're saying ignorance.
It's not an excuse.
Right, yes.
Okay, I believe it is.
Alright, well, what did, um, what did?
Well, it's bliss, it's not an excuse.
Right, yeah, man.
It's not an excuse, but if people are new to a community and there is nowhere for them to go to see what the rules are.
Yes, well, what?
It's, what, how, Google.
What I was gonna say.
Okay, Google.
I I have to, I have to admit, I tried to pull up our code today and it was unavailable.
Yeah.
Yes.
Oh, that's strange, like, I rely, actually, I don't have a complete paper code, a hard copy code, it's not, I have one, it hasn't been, it hasn't been.
Oh, we can get one of those.
Well, I have one, but it hasn't been kept updated, so I inherited one, but it has, it's very common, these supplements are laborious and it depends how many you have to fill in this, so what I, I always use E-code.
And our updated updates are not, our our new laws are not in our code.
Mm-hmm.
Still not.
Wow.
No, not last I checked.
But I I rely entirely on E-code and I have seen a couple of times where it says that these have not yet been um codified and those would be ones that I guess local laws of two thousand and twelve.
Well, what did the building inspector think of the plan?
What I was gonna say is maybe, I'm sorry, did you, I don't know.
Well, no, I just asked what what the um building inspector thought of Ariana's plan.
Well, I spoke with Kurt about it and, no, I did not speak with Kathy about it.
Not Kathy.
Well, actually, and again, I wasn't aware of what was coming to be on the agenda, otherwise I would have.
Well, it would have been something you would be aware of if it was on our draft agenda.
Okay, but at least you know that that's why I didn't um, I didn't call, um, I didn't ask you to to be with Kathy and I or anything of that nature, um, I discussed with her the the idea of of making our code enforcement the best it could be and I I do have to say, um, that I think the reporting from my department done by the the building inspector um, is pretty detailed on the violations, I, um, I I would probab- I would wager that we have, um, uh, for a community of our size and with one building inspector, that we probably um handle more complaints and um have of course more inspections, for example, our annual inspections, which are only required by the state to be every three years. And additionally, uh, orders to remedy of all sorts, whether they're resolved in court or whether they're resolved in advance of court, I I would actually put our department as far as its monitoring and and citations and notice remedies up against any community in the area of our population and our staff.
Well, I think we have more work on our plates regarding the number of rental properties we have in comparison to other communities, um, which is part of why, you know, a lot of these things that are not, I I mean, I consider that, you know, in terms of somebody is somebody's living in this space, that should be an obvious priority and I think that that takes up a lot of the focus, I mean, certainly is pretty obvious from the reports that that takes up a lot of the focus of the building department's time. Um, and so this kind of thing would, I mean, I really wanted to have a discussion about this, you know, just to see if people thought we should have any, you know, involvement in backing up our building department regarding this, but.
Well, I'm gonna go another tact and that is, I believe that most people, if they understand what the rules are, will follow them.
Right.
If they don't know the rules, I disagree with you, I think it becomes our responsibility, if I'm going to go out and take it shit
Mm-hmm.
for your grass, what is our grass rule?
Three inches, I think.
Three inches, okay?
It's not three inches.
It's blame that is.
You need to be.
It's thirty, it's three inches.
It's not that high.
No, it's not that high.
No, it isn't, that's this, this is what, one years in the grass.
We can always change the lawsuits.
Okay, that's different, it, cause I think we should. Three inches of grass, if I know that that's the rule.
Then you'll go out and cut your grass.
I'll go out and cut my grass, if I don't know that's the rule, chances are, I might let it go.
I'll let the grandma's live there.
But then that is taking, the the two, one of two things can happen.
Probably let me check.
The building inspector walks by and sees it and I get in trouble, or my neighbor rats and I get in trouble.
Mm-hmm.
But in either case, it's a waste of a certain amount of building inspection time that could be better spent enforcing more important codes.
Exactly.
Mm-hmm. Than going after people who aren't shoveling their walk, who aren't doing their grass and all of, and not putting their garbage cans. And I'm just telling you from
What?
my experience with the shade tree committee. It is courtesy and it, and it has very positive benefits.
This has improved it. Yeah.
Because people know what the rules are, they feel that we have reached out to inform them
Mm-hmm.
and they are going to try and rise to the occasion.
Right.
And that would free our people to be dealing with a, what I consider far more serious things and it also takes us out of well, Brian got away with it, his grass is taller than mine and I just happened to have gotten caught, that's nonsense.
Right, exactly.
I think we ought to just allow the building to per- give the permission or whatever we need to do.
They they already have it, they don't need it from us.
Oh.
This is just doing, this is just doing their job, yeah, which is why it was like, why it's important to to
Well, then do it. Then have the notices.
if there's changes that want to be made, to talk to the people who are doing the work, like Kathy and Holly and Kurt.
Yes.
And not just Kurt at a, at another unrelated meeting.
Why they can do that, does the shade tree commission have to come to the board for approval to send out notices?
Kurt and I spoke specifically about this.
Cause the shade tree commission aren't staff, I don't know, I don't know.
They don't have.
Kathy's our enforcer.
Yes, but they don't have, maybe I'm missing the point, but they don't, the shade tree commission itself, the the membership does not have the powers that our code and our
They don't have enforcement authority.
our sole code enforcement officer have.
Oh, that's not, that wasn't my question, Kurt, my question was the shade tree commission annually now sends out a notice with the water bill that reminds people what the rules are. In order for us to do that, I had to come to the board and ask their permission to send out the notice. I'm asking how you could send out the notice like I'm talking about on these minor cosmetic issues.
He would, I mean, he wouldn't know the answer to that. Kurt wouldn't know.
Well, it sounds like it's.
I think it, I think it's, I I don't, I, this is old practice and maybe I'm wrong, I could have to ask the, our attorney or Nancy, but it's there's a difference between volunteers and paid staff, we can put things into, you know, for departmental purposes, we can mail things out whenever we choose, they don't need the force mission to send out mailers.
And so they don't.
Also, if you do a town, a townwide mailing or a village wide mailing is, it's an expensive.
If we have the budget, it, right, if we have the budget, then sure, you know, you do that.
Well, well, that's part of why I wanted to bring this to the board is maybe we want to budget for some kind of yearly notification where once a year this type of thing is sent out to.
But Jason says that we don't even need to do that, they can do that.
Well, I'm saying not necessarily in a water bill, like as a separate kind of mailing, but we would have to budget for that kind of thing.
Why don't we put it on the website?
That's, that's going to be my recommendation, well, but I think that our website is sort of in a state of suspended animation, in other words, it hasn't it hasn't changed much sin- since I got here.
Well, the two thousand eleven village election laws and the waters are still on the website, so how about we replace that with all of these codes?
Are still, they're.
But as soon as, and I, and I understand that it takes, it takes talented people to develop a good website, but I would highly recommend it because the more people are used to tuning into it, then once we, once we announce that we're revamping it, more peo- more people will tune into it and that includes for, um, especially for, they they could. Sure.
Right.
Yeah.
We've been down this road of, and many, many conversations and our, our website updates are are now on, we've been on pause for several reasons, now they're on on hold because
Say you've already.
um, well, Brian researches a possibly better way to do it than we were already planning, so we're in process, but it's, we're not there yet, that's all.
But as soon as it becomes well-known, when we, when we accomplish that, then.
And why don't we just have a little box that you can change and it's called village property requirements?
Of course, and and again, that that's when more people feel their website is.
Cyber.
Wait, make it positive, these are the rules, you must mow your grass, you must put your garbage cans away, positive things, I mean, you know, let's not.
Mm-hmm.
Well.
And if we find violators, then, that's a different issue.
By the way, we, you know, we still, there's still, um, there's no dearth of um, of violations for cutting trees down, I understand it may be improved from what it was, but there is a little bit of a cat and mouse game, alright, where our, my building inspector is ready upon receiving a call out in the community, jumps out of her chair and goes to that site to see before it's too late, because there's a little bit of a game that's played about when the tree is cut, it's simply too late to to glue it back back to the.
Let her, let her sit there and let it get cut and guess what? The consequences will fall.
I'm not sure the con.
It was more important, the tree or the fine?
I'm not sure the consequences are that daunting, sometimes that's a calculated decision.
Right, that's another.
Yeah, we wanna prevent the tree from being cut down.
Um, again.
Well, all I'm saying, all I'm, I'm gonna say about all of this is
Alright, alright, alright.
I do.
I am not interested in selective enforcement.
No one is.
No, no one is and and.
Okay, and I think that's what we're all trying to say, is that we want the rules known and we want the rules enforced.
That's right, and actually, we're not, we're not interested in um, in collecting fines or generating um, um, revenue from this, not at all.
No.
Um, that that's not the way that we we serve our community and so those communities that have achieved a level of compliance which is truly superior
No, I agree.
and there are some out there in the region, um, they've done so and then they're in a position of maintaining it, which takes less of an effort than establishing it. Um, so what you have there is a, an excellent statistic, which we obviously have, I agree with you, it's, it's a matter of, you can't, you can't claim ignorance of the code, however, we can
I have an idea, I have a.
we can help by providing information.
And it's make people and then they'll actually, you know.
I I have an idea, you know, every spring we do our, we put a notice in everyone's door, basically, um, maybe on the backside of that we can print some of these.
Oh, about when leaves, when spring cleanup.
Spring cleaning and and, yeah, and I think we do it for leaf collection as well, so we do this twice a year
I saw a notice about that this fall.
and the backside of that sheet is always blank, um.
Especially in the spring, that would be a good time.
And so I think that, because I I mean, and see, this is part of why I wanted to have a discussion, because I really just wanted to, I feel like we spur ideas within each other and it doesn't necessarily have to be something that, you know, I mean, like you were saying, the building department can just put something in the water, in the water bills if they so choose and so you know, having that be, having that be something that is done regularly and you can be the decider and you and Kathy and Holly can say, okay, well, you know, we brought all the, all the, you know, unenclosed dumpsters up to code, now we're gonna tackle this next thing, whether, I mean, you've been working on graffiti, you know, that's, that's something that like, you know, we didn't say, let's work on graffiti, you're working on graffiti. So I think that this is like, you know, you can, you can ha- have that in your decision, but maybe we can talk, I mean, instead of budgeting for something new, something that we're already doing, that goes to every household regardless, cause like the water bill might go to the landlord, you know, when I when I lived in a rental property, we never got a water bill, but we always got that spring cleaning, um, so maybe that's what we can put some, a list of these things on.
And that's where you would put the property type things.
Right, exactly.
The garbage cans and, but the dumpsters, that should be a special mailing to all businesses and it's time anyway for Kathy, cause she did it last year, this time to remind people about putting their posters up on the telephone poles and she's done that and it's gonna be time again for her to do it, so maybe at that point and a reminder along with, you can't, you know, you're responsible for these things
Yeah.
that your dumpsters must be contained and, you know, there are business type problems and property type problems.
Yeah, yeah. Well, well, dumpsters, I mean, there are, there are residential properties that also have dumpsters.
I don't.
Well, well, you don't, no, but I, of course, I don't, I'm a person, but.
By the way, that's, some of those things could actually be an, an outgrowth of our enforcement effort, in other words, I'm, um, single family homes should not need actual dumpsters.
No.
Um, they should not and they may need an extra container, an extra trash or rec- and or recycling container, but
Right.
you know, that's um, that's very unfortunate, because first of all, we all know what it, what it sounds like, um, early in the morning when a, when a dumpster is
Yeah.
as opposed to a plastic trash.
Even if it's after seven AM.
That's right, it it really, I mean, again, it's also, and it requires, of course, that, that truck to use, um, um, well, a lot more fuel to lift the thing and and spewing out, screwing out more, um, um, diesel emissions at, at idle when they're, when they're using their engine to, uh, to pr- to lift the dumpster.
Diesel fumes.
So maybe we need a, a monthly planner's show on channel twenty-three, I'll give your tips for the.
You know, I thought about it for a second, I said, no, why don't I not, uh, however.
You could have a little animated ticker pulling his garbage cans back.
Well, actually, uh, you know, that's not a, but again, the, the website is the, is the first thing I'd suggest because it's so cost effective and I think we can, we can actually, um, I think we can invite more users, in other words, as we upgrade it and make these announcements, let's say, at village board meetings and other venues, then I think we'll have more, um, people tuning into it.
So, and when the spring cleaning happened, April and that.
But, but, the thing that that might work is on the back of the spring cleanup.
Yeah.
Say, please go to the village website.
For a full list of.
For a full list of property expectations in the village and the house.
Very true, I I wouldn't want, I I'd, no, we don't like to hear, um, when folks come. Very true, I I wouldn't want, I I, no, we don't like to hear, um, when folks come in and and say right to us that they they simply didn't, um, know about provision of the water.
And I think it's very possible they did.
Of course.
Do we know when spring cleaning is? When the.
I don't.
It's a. Thank you, Sherlock Holmes.
I have a passionate.
That's the twenty-first of March.
Okay, thank you.
You could also, also use the channel twenty-three, you don't have to have a particular show, although there's nothing wrong with that, but you put, like they do with the college station.
We can have the planner show.
No, but, but.
All right, are you wanting anything done with this?
No, I really just wanted to have a discussion.
Kurt's got a pile of things to take back to the department.
Oh, but yeah, I mean, I think that this is something, you know, we can look at what might be, I mean, and, you know, I can work with you and Kathy on what might be the list for the spring cleanup, um flyer and that could be something that, you know, we just kind of like work on putting together, together.
Well, we'd, we'd welcome that and again, we do want, we want to inform as many folks as possible, as, whatever will fit in an envelope in a bill or anything so that, so that really there, there are less orders to remedy, there are less, um, folks having to take their own time to come in and and discuss it with us at 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 the department.
Like Stuart was saying, have this lot of public access.
Before I was cut off, um.
I'll move the building.
Wait, no. He said before I was cut off and started this. Everyone shut up, Stu- Stewart can go.
I I'm.
Stewart, would you speak up, please?
I am about to, um, be- besides the the live show, you also have the possibility on the channel twenty-three, things like the college station where they have, and you know.
Oh, those flyers.
Announcement, announcement, I mean, and and you wouldn't necessarily have the same one, but if you change that every two weeks or something, you can get out those ideas and people will see them over time.
Clearly an opportunity there.
I just, we have to put them on Facebook for you, we could be, let's open it on Facebook.
Are we good, Ariana?
Yes, thank you, everybody.
Move the consent agenda.
No, cause I have a.
Well, okay, so, all right, let me, let me refresh my memory, the whole point of the consent agenda is that by the time we hit the meeting, no one objects to anything on it, so if anyone disagrees with something on the consent agenda, let me know before the meeting, that gets removed and then, that's the whole point.
You know what I wanna suggest?
What's that?
The consent agenda is a dumb idea.
It was Stuart's idea.
Thanks.
No, I, the reason I say that.
It's a dumb idea.
If it's, if it's done properly, it's a great idea, the problem is we don't use the tool well.
But when we have the, when do we have the opportunity really, I mean, I think we just move faster, I think we just move faster.
We wait until the meeting. As soon as you get the agenda, as soon as you get the agenda. We don't, trust me, can we try to do it, try, can we try to do it, so if you object?
Do everything with the minutes.
If you object to something, let me know before the meeting and then it'll be smooth, cause if we get, cause we're not dealing with a lot right now, but if we get to something where we have fifteen administrative things, that's all.
I'll tell you what, we can do the consent agenda, cause I don't have any amendments, I have a suggestion.
Mm-hmm. Okay, good, so do the statistics afterwards or what?
Right.
All right, I moved the consent agenda.
Second.
Any discussion?
I have.
Gotcha.
Oh, no, I have, I have just one, um, small note for the draft minutes that I could give to Katie, I don't think.
It, yeah.
What about this?
I don't know what you're holding up.
The, it's the minutes and it's blank things about
Oh, yeah?
When we motioned to come out of executive session.
Oh, I I forgot to give that note to Katie.
That's your fault.
That's my problem and we only got the minutes yesterday, so how was I supposed to say that I didn't want him on the consent agenda when I didn't have time to look at the minutes before today?
Because that's a reason to pull it off the consent agenda.
And that's why we wanted to pull it off the consent agenda.
Which is why when I set this up, it's Stuart's suggestion, I said, let me know ahead of time, so you don't have to have this discussion at the board table.
No, I just moved that we reprimand you for not giving Katie the note and be done, I'll say.
That's fine. I have no problem with that.
Reprimand.
All right, I'll consider myself reprimanded.
Consent agenda.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Is there any opposed?
You understand Katie, you gotta fill this out.
Yes, I did.
Brian had something.
Brian had something.
It's okay, it's very simple, you wanna just give it to you?
Yeah.
Can she, the consent agenda with the minutes amended?
Yep.
Fine, perfect.
Yeah.
Eh, oh, your suggestion.
Thank you.
Thank you, your suggestion.
I have a suggestion. I noticed that we have, and we did the last time, have indications of where on the videotape these things occur.
Mm-hmm.
Since we are doing that, I would suggest that you can dispense with all discussion shown in the minutes, which aren't supposed to be in the minutes anyway, and that you only show actions at the board.
Motions and actions, sure.
And then you put the video in, so if Kurt wants to go to see what Sally had to say about something he wanted, he can go to the video and look at it and it's gonna say you bunged us a time.
I, and it's, I can't even begin to tell you how much time that was saying.
That's a great idea.
I love that idea, all right, I'm gonna move it, second.
You don't even need to, she's just gonna do it.
Let me, let me.
No, I'm gonna move it so it's on the record.
Let me ask a question about that.
Yep.
Yes, sir.
Uh, if I'm, a a resident and I don't have the TV, do we have someplace here where someone can come take the tape and and show?
Yes.
Yes, all online and there's video.
Do they, do they, and they, do we tell people, do they, is that on our website, come down and see the video?
On more than one occasion, I have had someone come sit at my desk with my headset and watch a video.
As Brian knows, when he used me about the noise ordinance before I got elected, I used it.
That's the best we can do, I mean.
We cut Stuart off again, you know.
I said, I, I, I don't know, I don't.
Just yellow.
Gotcha.
Got it, right?
I don't know if that's the best we can do, though, I mean, maybe we should have a place, I mean, if someone wants to come down and the clerk has to get out of a chair and put on her, give somebody their headset, we ought to be able to do better than that for somebody from, you know, have, here's a room, you come in and listen to the tape or something.
We do that, there's a DVD player, we can set it off in the side room.
Oh, I thought you said that he, he came and sat in a chair or something, you know.
It doesn't matter what.
We, we can work something, we can work out something so that the constituency is best taken care of, we'll get it.
Well, well, um, I'm more, that's good, but I'm more interested that you don't have to give up your time, give up your seat and someone's sitting there, I mean, cause you've got things to do.
No, we, we can still get upstairs and watch.
But the board is essentially buying a lot of it, we just.
Okay.
All right.
Anyway, can we?
It's gone.
Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I move we go to executive session to discuss contract negotiations.
Really voting no?
Second, all in favor?
Voting no?
Aye.
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 Vote yes.
Aye.
All right, take a five-minute recess first, bathroom breaks and such.
Good idea.
Do you want the video first, Mr.?
Uh, no, that's good, Matt, you can go home.
Sure.